Hi, everybody. My name is Krista Boyle and I am the Head of Communications for Cincinnati Public Schools. I am incredibly excited to be here with you today with our leadership team. I'm going to go through some quick logistics and then I am going to turn it over to our superintendent. So we are going to try to pretty quickly move through a presentation and at the end there will be time for Q and A. There are two ways to do that. You can share your Q and A through the chat Q and A function, or you can do that live and you just use the raise your hand feature and you'll be put into queue. We're just going to do first come, first served. You'll get an invitation and you'll want to accept that and then unmute yourself when we call your name. So if you have technical questions or concerns, there's also a separate chat function, just a regular chat function, and you can submit questions to the moderators for those. We are going to try to stick to our hour agenda. We just, we know everyone's busy. Their recording will be available afterwards and we will also be making Q and A available. So it's possible we don't get to all of the questions and we'll make sure those are shared. And then this will also be posted on our YouTube account, probably within about 24 hours, and we'll be able to be viewed in a translation mode on there if you're interested in a non-English version. So with that, I will turn it over to our superintendent, Laura Mitchell.
Hello CPS families. I am so excited that we have over 500 families who have tuned in tonight. So I'm really happy that you're here with us, that you've decided to spend an hour with us this evening. And I'm so excited to see so many people interested in what's going on within CPS. And so thank you so much for being here with us. So I'm going to actually see just for a couple of moments if we have any board members who are attending this session who would like to be able to speak up and at least say hello to our parents. So any board members with us this evening? Okay, so we will move along. So this is one of the first town halls that we're going to host for families. We will have them all throughout the school year. So don't think this is your only opportunity to be able to have your voice heard or to be able to ask us questions. You know, we have board meetings and at the hearing of the public, people have the opportunity to speak. But over the last several weeks, we haven't really had the opportunity to hear a lot from our parents. And so, parents, this is a special session just for parents. We want to hear from you. We want to know, what are your questions? What are your great ideas? What are your thoughts about what we're doing in CPS? And how can we better improve what we're going to provide for your kids? It's your opportunity to speak up and speak out to us and so we are here to listen and to cheerlead you on. Next slide, please. So as we think about our work for the upcoming school year, there are three key messages that we're going to focus on. And those messages are really centered around health and safety. That's the first priority that we have. Before we can teach our kids, we have to make sure that they're healthy and that they're safe, as well as the staff members who work with them and anyone who comes into our buildings. We also have a focus on accelerating student learning. So this is not just about remediation and intervention, especially based upon the fact that the last 10 weeks of last school year, our kids weren't in school face-to-face. And so as opposed to thinking about remediation and acceleration or remediation intervention, we have to accelerate their learning. We have to move it faster for them to make up for the time that was lost. And then another core message is this is really anchored in equity for all kids. And so we're going to really spend a lot of time over the next several months talking about equity and how we can improve it within our district. You know, if there was ever a time that we have learned a lot, it is right now during this pandemic. We learned a lot of lessons during this pandemic. I think the entire world learned a lot of lessons. And so the idea is that we have to continue to learn and to continue to perfect our strategies and our methods for delivering a quality education for our young people. So you may be aware that at the end of June, the board made a decision to move to a 2-3 model, blended model for the upcoming school year. So next slide. Thank you so much. And the board had always said that in August, early August, that we would come back together, look at the data and make a decision as to whether or not we could go, that we should go to distance learning, if we should keep the 2-3 model, or if we could even increase the number of days that our kids have in session with their teachers. Because we know that our kids need to be with their teachers. They also need to be with their friends and their peers to be able to socially mature. And so that is our hope and our aim at the very end of the day is to get our kids back in session face-to-face. But because of the data in terms of the confirmed cases for our specific area by zip code, by neighborhood, we've made a decision to move to distance learning the first five weeks. Now, other urban districts have said that they're going to go for the entire quarter of distance learning. We have not made that choice yet because again, we want to be able to look at the data and to be able to pivot very quickly if we can to in-person instruction for our young people. So around the 14th of September, we will analyze our data. We look at it actually on a daily basis, but we'll analyze it to determine if we can open our doors two weeks face-to-face on the 28th. The other reason we're really interested in only going for the first five weeks and then hopefully we can switch to in-person if possible is because the governor is saying that based upon national modeling that's being conducted right now in terms of looking at COVID-19, it's likely that during the months of November, December, and January, we won't be able to have face-to-face instruction. And so we want to front-load as much education as we possibly can, as well as practices that will be necessary if we have to go to a distance learning model for a long period of time. Now, throughout all of this, we have learned to become flexible and very nimble and agile. And I think it goes back to learning. So you know, as we learn more information, we change. And so it means that a decision that was made on one day may very well have to change two days later based upon our situation or the data or the information we've received. And so we don't want to be flip-flopping back and forth all over the place, but we do need to be flexible enough to make informed decisions that are really in the best interest of our kids, families, and also the community at large. Next slide. So you may be asking, so what data are you looking at to make these decisions? And there are really four data points that we are looking at. And when I say "we," Cincinnati Public, we aren't looking at this data alone because let's face it, we are, our background is in educating kids. Our background is not in healthcare. And so we are not the healthcare professionals, nor would we ever pretend to be. But we are so fortunate to have the Cincinnati Health Department, as well as Children's Hospital, walking side-by-side with us through this entire journey, every single week to inform the work. And they're helping us make decisions based upon our data. So we look at the number of confirmed cases by zip code, by neighborhood for the city of Cincinnati. And what we want to be able to see is a downward trend. So what that means is we want to see that the numbers, the confirmed cases, are steadily going down consecutive days. Right now, our environment is very unstable. So one day we're down, the next day we're up, and it's very fluid. And so we want to be able to see a true trend, which means we're moving downward for consistent days, day after day, moving down. We also want to have a positivity rate of about 5% to 6%. And again, that's coming from our healthcare professionals. So right now, the city of Cincinnati, and I checked on Friday, we are at 7.7%. So that means of the people who are tested for COVID, 7.7 have a positive result. We want to see that result be around 5% to 6%. In addition, the third piece of data that we're looking at is the public health advisory system that was developed by the governor. And there are four levels ranging from yellow to purple. And for a long time, we were red. So we were in level three, the second highest. So it's yellow, orange, red, and then purple. And purple is the most dangerous. We were red and we're really happy to say that we are now in the orange. I was on a phone call earlier today with the health commissioner, the city health commissioner, as well as the county health commissioner. And they all verified that in Hamilton County, we are now in the orange. The fourth piece of data that we want to be able to have improvement in is the length of time that it takes for people to get a test result. So right now, it can take anywhere from three days to 14 days depending on where you get your test. And so we want to see a shortened time period so that we can respond very quickly to people who have COVID-19. And so those are the data points that we're looking at to make our decisions along with our healthcare professionals. So I think that now I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Trimble Oliver. She is our Chief Strategy Officer.
Good afternoon, everyone. We are very much looking forward to the day when we can welcome our students back into our school buildings because we know that in-person learning is best for them academically and socially emotionally. When we do, we will make sure that it is the safest environment possible. This doesn't mean a zero-risk environment, but we have taken the CDC guidelines for schools and adopted them into our district safety plan, which you can see on the next slide. These CDC guidelines are not requirements for schools in the United States, nor in Ohio, but at CPS, we are implementing every single one of those recommendations. These safety precautions do require a heavy financial investment and they will impact school operations. We can be sure that school will not look exactly the same as it did last spring before we closed. Now, if I had to boil down the top four safety items for you in a summary, it would be this. And these are in order of importance. One is the six-foot social distancing. Two is masks, which will be required for everyone in our buildings. Three is hand hygiene. And four is cleaning and disinfecting. What is also important, which you will see on the next slide, is that we are asking for your help in monitoring symptoms. We would like you to please take your child's temperature every morning before leaving for school. And if your child has any symptoms, please keep them home. This is how we keep each other safe now. We would also like to please ask for your help in arranging methods for your child to get home should they become ill during the school day. This will be very important for us to be able to isolate individuals and prevent the spread of COVID in our schools. We will have temperature screenings in all of our buildings. And all of our schools will have a school nurse this year and an isolation area for anyone who may have symptoms. We will have a system to track any confirmed cases. If we do have a confirmed case in our school, we will follow our procedure, which is isolating the individual, determining if there were any close contacts, cleaning and disinfecting the affected area, and possible room or school closures if it is necessary. On the next slide, you can see an example of what our classrooms will look like with the six-foot social distancing. This will be a hard habit to get used to, but it is the most important safety precaution. You can also see an example of the classroom cleaning kit that the district will be providing to every classroom. And finally, our district's safety plan has been reviewed and revised based on input from Cincinnati Health Department and Children's Hospital. And we're very fortunate to have their expertise in guiding us in our safety plan. And now I will turn it over to Tiana Yamat.
Good afternoon. I'm here to talk a little bit about distance learning. Next slide, please. So we hope to have clear expectations. In the start of the school year, we believe that it will have a smart start in the beginning. So with those expectations, we want to build relationships. We are crafting handbooks to deliver to our families, students, and staff. During the orientation, you will receive a schedule and a syllabus if you're at the high school. And I just wanted to highlight the next two bullet points with attendance and grading. Attendance will be taken. So in your Google Meet classroom, you will need to log on. It is synchronous learning. And we are providing grades. So we're moving past the pass-and-fail system and going to our normal grading system. We also want to make sure we remove any barriers for our students. So right now, we're distributing devices and making sure students have connectivity. We want to give out textbooks, instructional supplies, and art supplies to be used at home. And also make sure that all of our students and families have their Power School and Schoolology passwords. We also want to clearly communicate our office hours. So if anyone needs support and help, they know how to reach the appropriate people. Practicing is important as well. We want to make sure that our students and families are able to access Power School and Schoolology. Students are able to upload assignments and check grades and to log on to Google Meet. The next slide here is on these four areas and which tools we'll be using. So for instance, for building relationships and really connecting with students, we will be using Google Meet. For diagnosing learning, map assessment, we are currently using map assessment. But the company has figured out a way how we can administer the assessment at home and the teachers can prother the exam through Google Meet. Again, we want to make sure that our students are fully aware that assignments will be graded and they will be receiving feedback throughout the year. And if they need any support, we will have office hours. And accelerated learning, it's important that we have clear communication and we're going to use Schoolology, so it's a one-stop shop, along with district-adapted materials across all of our schools. The last two slides are really sample schedules of what the day may look like. Again, these are just samples. The schools will create their schedule based on the state compliance measures. So in any typical schedule, you will see opportunities for self-directed learning. So that's opportunities for learning at home and students will work on the assignments at home. So you do not have to log in at those times. But where you see subject areas, that's where the Google Meet classes will be. We are really paying attention to screen time. So a typical day is around seven hours. We have cut that in half as far as screen time with lunch and specials and breaks throughout the day. In each schedule, we will also have office hours indicated. And the last slide is a sample of the high school schedule. So we would split the bell schedule so they would keep their normal schedule. But here, it shows Tuesdays and Thursdays, bells one and three, Wednesdays and Fridays, four through six, and the opportunity to meet with the advisor and counselors and also self-directed learning with office hours. Next up, we have Assistant Superintendent Bunty.
Hello, everyone. Next slide, please. Thank you for being here with us this afternoon. I just wanted to talk a little bit about distance learning for our students with disabilities. Please know that over the summer, many teachers have been working to provide activities for those students who may have difficulty accessing curriculum via technology. We also recognize that for many of our students, we may have those who require assistive technology and augmentative communication. Those systems will be sent home to support our students. Next slide, please. As always, with students with disabilities, decisions regarding when we return for blended and what their schedules look like will be made by I E P T. As for our English learners, we recognize that the very similar kinds of things are true. All of our English learners will have access to CPS laptops. And our itinerant teachers and our ESOL teachers will continue to provide support to those students. Next slide. So also, we've talked about physical safety of our students. We recognize that emotional safety is critical as well. So all of our staff members will receive training around social-emotional practices in August, August 20th. And you will also receive, and as will our students, handbooks around how they can keep themselves and others safe. Please know that our school's social workers will be providing small group support in a virtual platform. And we also have other supports that will be provided virtually as well. A video series was also created by our partners at Cincinnati Children's and joining forces through the Maerson Center that will be accessible to our families and staff. And now here is Shawna Murphy, our Assistant Superintendent. Oh, I forgot, one slide. I apologize. We also have handbooks that will be coming home, as I mentioned. Our Student COVID Guide that students will cover with their teachers and go through. And then you will be provided with a copy so that you can review that as a resource as well. And now here is Shawna Murphy, our Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Bunty. Good day, everyone. Next slide, please. Cincinnati Public Schools understands that one of the concerns and questions our families have is around childcare. And I want you to know that we've been working for the last several weeks to creatively provide childcare hubs throughout our community. You'll see on the second bullet, some of the places we've been working with, partnering with. Cincinnati Recreation Commission, Cincinnati Parks, the library, YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, Greater Cincinnati STEM Collaborative Artworks, the Community Action Agency, and Cincinnati Museum Center have all come together and been meeting on a weekly basis to determine how childcare might be able to be delivered within the community for our young people. The opportunities will include both before and after school, as well as full-day opportunities. And we are continuing to work through this and will let you know final details as soon as possible. This information will be made public and listed on our district website. Next slide, please. We made the decision around athletics to take a pause at this time. Other great urban school districts have decided to halt athletics completely, but we're on a pause for right now. And with junior high athletics, we have decided to not continue forward for the fall. However, we will assess, reassess athletics by September 28th in terms of what will happen for the winter with all sports, including junior high sports. Of course, our number one concern is health and safety of all of our students. And we do feel like this is the best thing to do on behalf of our students' well-being. For the high school students, our athletic directors and our coaches are still working with the young people to create highlight reels and will be able to send to colleges and universities tapes and stream events to be able to demonstrate the skills of our students. I believe following me is our attorney, Dan Hoing.
Good afternoon. My name's Dan Hoing. I'm the district's lawyer. I just have a brief update for you from the board's policy committee. Some of the policies that the board's been working on include the mask policy, likely to be passed at the board meeting on Wednesday evening. It's a broad policy, probably one of the broader policies that you're going to see among school districts. Requires the wearing of masks for all students and staff throughout the school day, with some exceptions for eating and drinking and, you know, other practical reasons where social distancing can be maintained. But it's a broad mask policy that when we're back in person, masks will be required. If you've been up to the ed center, you know that masks are required already in all of our buildings. The board's also suspending some of its policies that we typically apply during a school year. Field trips will be very limited this year. At this point, teachers and staff are not planning field trips for students. We are temporarily suspending the Alternative to Suspension and Expulsion Program. That's a program that temporarily educates students during the time that they're on a suspension or expulsion. That program will be suspended. Use of district facilities is down to really only the most essential functions. And school visitors will be significantly restricted this year. The only real partners that will presently, thinking will be allowed on school campus will be those that are co-located, such as health partners and mental health partners. That's my update and I think Ms. Wagner might be next. No, Jeremy. Golly, you, my good friend. Technology Chief Jeremy Galli.
Thanks, Dan. So today, I'm going to provide you some quick updates on the district's technology plans and hopefully answer some of the outstanding questions you may have. First thing first, to make sure that everyone is aware, CPS does have a device available for every enrolled student, as well as any new enrollments we receive. After this week and next, we will have had a distribution opportunity at every school location for the second through 12th grade students. You can see the remaining dates below or above on the schedule posted on the screen, or you can find it on the CPS website. We will also begin distributing iPads for the pre-K through first-grade students on August 24th. We will continue after that point to offer options to receive devices until every student has their device. Also, we will be offering a parent and student technology helpline that can assist you or your students with everything, from how to turn on the laptop, to how to connect to your Wi-Fi, to how to log into email. We plan to have this hotline up and running during the first week of September. Last but not least, the Connect Our Students Free Internet Program is now available to all eligible families at all CPS schools. Eligible in this case simply means you have a student enrolled at CPS and live within the Cincinnati Bell service area. Now, there are two ways to sign up for the service. The first is that any of the CPS device distribution sites, you will find a Cincinnati Bell table that you can walk up to and just sign up on the spot. The second is to call and sign up directly at the numbers you see on the slide on your screen. Or again, after the meeting, you can find them on the CPS website. It's very important to remember that your address has to be up to date with CPS so it can be verified as eligible. Unfortunately, as with any new program, there are bugs to work out. So if you tried to call last week and were unfortunately told your address didn't qualify, we apologize. There were a number of addresses that we found issues with, but we've put things in place starting today that should correct most, if not all of them. So please try again. And of course, if you still have any issues, let us know. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to the district treasurer, Jennifer Ware.
Thank you, Jeremy. Good afternoon, everyone. It's so great to see all the 714 attendees today. That's wonderful. I'm here this afternoon to share with you just a quick financial status of the district. And just to kind of set the stage, to explain that our general operating funds come from two major places. The first one comes from the State Foundation Growth Formula. And that's about 39% of our revenues. And the rest comes from local items like property taxes, the reinvestment, community reinvestment agreements, tuition that parents pay. And so both sides are estimated to take somewhat of a hit because of the closure. You go ahead to the next slide. Thank you. On the State Foundation formula, we, the state of Ohio had to cut $350 million from the K-12 industry. And Cincinnati Public Schools' portion of that was $8.7 million. And that was deducted off of last year's, the last couple payments that we had last year. And we're anticipating another cut about the same this year. On the other half, in terms of property taxes, we're anticipating that our delinquent collections are going to go up. And so that we, not as deeply as the state side of the revenues, but both of those revenue shortages is causing us to rethink and reset our budget target for next year. But just to share with you some of the things that are happening throughout the city and the state is that our unemployment rate went as high as 16% in late March, early April. In fact, I read it somewhere, where in the first three months of the closure, our unemployment applications more than tripled the number that had done the entire previous year. And so as the unemployment rate went up, Ohio income tax withholdings went down. People weren't working. And then discretionary spending went down. And then we started hearing from all the county treasurers that collections were lagging. And they were all delaying the second collection cycle from June until July. Also, people all around us were laying people off, furloughing, or banning university clothes. We had universities announce 20% pay cuts. Medical industry was announcing big pay cuts. And we were able to hold on to our employees throughout the, to finish up the school year and then to start this one. Despite having some guidance from the Office of Management and Budget that we should be setting 20% of our budget aside as a reserve and we can't possibly operate that way. But there is some help. So the first CARES Act that came out, we were allocated $23.5 million, which we, our portion of that was going to be $18 million. The rest goes to our non-public schools that reside in the district. our non-public schools that reside in the district. And then the formula changed, and ours, our share was lower to 16.5%. And then CARES Act 2 was just recently announced, which we're going to get $2.2 million to spend supplementally. But you can go, next slide, please. So here's what we're talking about, this year's general budget. So because we hadn't determined, the board hadn't determined what return-to-school model we were going to be using, we had to revisit the way our funds were being allocated for the budget, and we had to make some really tough decisions about what we were going to spend our money on, and how we're going to support this new way of operating. And so just immediately, because the reduced revenues that we anticipated, our budget target was reduced by $32 million from last strategic plan, and start spending money in different ways. And so that return-to-school model is costing us an additional $29 million. So that gave us a budget gap of about $60 million. The performance leadership team has worked very hard over the summer to try to come up with a balanced budget. We delayed, removed, reduced, vendor contracts, put a lot of projects on hold so that we could maintain enough cash so that we could pivot as a district needed to in terms of face-to-face or remote learning, so that we could support that effort. Now, in June 29th, the Board of Education adopted a temporary appropriation or budget, so to speak, that gave us 90 days worth of funding to get these schools started. But I now have a new deadline for October 1st to get the final budget filed with the Hamilton County Budget Commission. That appropriation is what gives me the authority to spend money. And so the board meeting on the 14th is when I'm anticipating a presentation to the board and ask for approval and adoption of the final budget. And I think that's my last slide, so I'll pass it back to Krista, I believe.
Great. Thanks, Jen. So we're going to start there. A couple, a handful of questions that we're getting through Q and A that we have kind of a critical mass on, so I want to make sure we get those answered. And then we'll alternate phone, and then probably come back to the Q and A and chat, and just kind of go back and forth. So the first two, actually, Tiana, are for you. The first is, with the set schedules each day, what if a student misses part of it, either because they don't have someone to help them get on, or, you know, parents are doing work with them later in the day? And then the second one is in-person orientation. Will that be mandatory? And are there other options for people who aren't comfortable sending kids into school?
We're working on that right now, as far as looking for a variety of ways to communicate information for the orientation, whether it's videotape, virtual, emails. So just looking at a variety of options for our families and students. As far as attendance and logging on to courses, if it is an academic course, you would need to log on. We are taking attendance. However, it's not a full day of screen time. So if your schedule, when you receive it during the orientation, states student-directed time, those are times where students are working at home on assignments. And each child's schedule will look different from school to school.
Okay, great. Thanks. There's a kind of a part B to that one, too. Are we recording instructions so that students can go back and watch?
Some of the lessons have videos. Some of the teachers are preparing slide decks. So a variety of classes will have that option, but not all.
Okay, great. Thank you. The next question is, I think, either Sarah or Dan, but what is the process if there's a confirmed, this would be once we go back into blended learning. What is the process if there's a confirmed case? And so how will people be notified? What groups will be notified? And one specific example that was given was if there were exposed students, an exposed student who has siblings who go to a different school, how do we think about cross-pendant contamination and notification across schools?
Sure. I'll start, and Sarah, interrupt me if you'd like. We are working on a process that we're calling our Confirmed Case Protocol, and that's the process that we would use and have used when we learn of a confirmed case in one of our buildings. So this has already happened, as we have folks who have worked throughout the summer. And if we learn of a case that's confirmed, these are the processes that we're going to follow. It involves a multiple kind of response, step response. So one is, we are putting in place a monitoring system so that we, when we learn of a confirmed case, we can know whether that is one confirmed case and isolated, or whether there's more than one, and, you know, whether we're looking at some kind of a hotspot. And so we've developed that, that monitoring process. Second is, we've got an excellent custodial crew that has, I think, worked very hard to have a good standard response in terms of cleaning and sanitizing. So finding out the areas where the infected individual was in our buildings, and then being able to clean and sanitize. The third is a reporting and communicating to folks who may have come in close contact with that confirmed case. So we have template letters that we are revising throughout the summer, but that will be used to communicate to you if your child or your student was, could have become, you know, in close contact with a confirmed case. So that communication process is in place. And then the fourth is, in accordance with what CDC recommends, considering a short closure, whether that's closing a classroom this summer, it has involved where we've had athletes, we've shut down teams for a period of time to account for a confirmed case. It could be a broader closure involving the school or the district. So that's what we're looking at. And again, we're trying to make it as standardized as possible so that, you know, schools are really well-equipped to deal with a case in the building. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Dan. Okay, Fran, let's see. I think we have a couple of folks who have raised their hand.
We do. Shawna has our first question. Go ahead, Shawna, by unmuting yourself, please. There you go.
Hello. I have a couple of questions for the board today. My first one is to know, has the deadline for the online school learning been extended? Last meeting, what kind of date was asked to make the decision? Also, last meeting, the board had stated all dates were subject to change and could change. Is this still possible? I feel like parents need a little bit more training or a little bit more time to complete your training and feel that they are able to operate your systems a little bit more. Also, how do you guys plan to proactively and immediately combat both COVID and anti-racism at the same time, as they both affect the education of all, well, I'm sorry, I mean, most students have gaps that were left open? Also, I haven't heard of any sports teams being closed down. So I wanted to know, where would this information been broadcast, and how will parents be able to see that information? And you guys are able to assure transparency?
Okay, great. I'm going to try to go through, I wrote them down, but let me, I'm going to make sure I go through them all. So I think, Tiana, the first one, has the August 10th date for CDA enrollment been extended?
We can be flexible with that date, because we just had some information sessions the end of last week. So the date was yesterday. But if you need more time, definitely give the school a call, and then I will also call them to let them know to be flexible. I would like to take this opportunity to say, because we are going remote and distance learning across the district, it is okay to stay in your current school. And after the five weeks, if we're in person and you would like to transfer to CDA at that time, we would allow that to happen as well.
Oh, that's great. Thanks. Several people asked that in the Q and A, so thanks for addressing that proactively. And then I think, could you maybe talk about the parent training? I think maybe there's a question in there about technology and just how parents, the virtual parent training?
Yes. Currently, we're trying to put videos together so parents can access them through social media, website. So we're working on that right now.
Okay, great. Thanks. And then Jeremy, there were, in terms of the technology and actually understanding the technology, there, in addition to this question, there were some questions about will, will there be a hotline, and how will parents and students get help with their technology? Do you maybe want to address that as sort of a subset?
Sure. So yes, there will be a technology hotline that's available directly to parents and students. A lot more information will be forthcoming, you know, in the next two weeks or so, on how to contact it. And again, they'll be able to help you with accessing the technology itself, and how to hook up a device, how to power on the device, up to using the specific CPS software and applications.
Okay, great. Thank you. Superintendent, did you want to address the question about how we would tackle COVID and anti-racism at the same time, or anyone else on PLT?
So I'm going to be providing an update to the board on our board meeting, or during our board meeting on Wednesday, the 12th. So there'll be an update as it relates to reopening our school district for the upcoming school year. And then I'm also going to talk to the board about, I think there are four major areas that we want to focus on for this upcoming school year. One is curriculum and instruction. Our kids have said they want to see themselves in the curriculum. Another is policies and practices. And so I know that the board is exploring an anti-racism policy, and then the practices to go along with it would be with the administration and the teachers and the staff would implement. We do know that this, in terms of really tackling racism in Cincinnati, in the city of Cincinnati, and also within Cincinnati Public, this is beyond a professional development. So this is not about, let's just send everybody to professional development, and we're all fine. And so it will go far deeper than that. A third area that we're going to really focus on will be our contracts. Though we have, you know, lots of contracts in which we have vendors who provide either services or products for us. And so I'll be updating the board on a pitch session that we're going to be having with the African-American Chamber to introduce members of their chamber to the products and services that we purchase in CPS so that they can bid those jobs. And so those are some of the areas that we're going to really focus on for the upcoming school year. And this will be done simultaneously with the work that we're doing about reopening our schools. So all this is really centered around, how can we reimagine CPS with the disruption that we've experienced, not only COVID, but also the civil unrest, and how can we create a new place that everyone feels, you know, that everyone has a place at the table?
That's terrific. Thank you so much. So I think we're going to go on to Hannah. Shawna, if I missed something, feel free to put that in chat or Q and A, and I'll make sure we circle back to it. But Hannah, I believe you are next, if you would like to unmute yourself.
Hello. I just have one question for the board that actually was, came up as an issue today, as I was trying to find childcare for my children. You guys actually touched on it a little bit, but I'm not sure if you're aware of the current policy. I don't know if it's Hamilton County or if it's Ohio policy, where school ages are allowed in the, at a center or a home provider before and after, but they're not allowed full-time during school hours. So my, my question is, if they don't address this issue by the time school is supposed to start, what are, what is there in place to help working parents who can't afford to take off? Obviously, you know, we can't leave our children at home if they don't have any other options, especially when you are counting attendance against the children.
So Ms. Hannah, Ms. Hannah, that's a fantastic question, and it is a question, a big question. Those community members we discussed a little bit earlier, that is one of the pieces that they are discussing. You should know that there are people advocating lobbying with the state about this very issue, because we believe in the city of Cincinnati, we will not be the only district and community in this situation, which is why it is top of mind for our school district. Hopefully, again, very soon, we should have some responses. And we are working with people who can make a difference in that area.
Great. Thanks, Shawna. There are a couple of questions, Susan, in your world, that I want to make sure we get to. The first, and I'll ask one and let you answer, and then ask the second one. The first is about students on IEPs and how we think about supporting them, especially during a period of distance learning.
Thank you. So we know that distance learning is a unique experience for all of us. So families and their IEP teams will be meeting during this time to make sure that the support is tailored for each individual child.
Great. Thank you. And then the second question is around social and emotional health, and how are we, it was one of the bigger concerns during the spring. So how are we thinking differently about that? Or maybe not differently, but kind of doubling down on some of those things for fall?
Yes. Thank you for that question as well. So social, emotional learning is critical, and we recognize that our school social workers play a very important role. So many school social workers have already started thinking about the ways that they're going to provide group support to our students when they return. We also have our mental health providers using telehealth to be able to support our learners. And we are also offering, or classroom teachers are doing morning meetings with their students to be able to check in with all of them.
That's great. Thank you. So it looks like we have a couple other folks who have raised their hands. Norhan, if you would like to unmute yourself? Okay, I'm going to unmute you. Oh, there you go.
Yeah. Hi. I'm Norhan Habibaz Mazer. But I, all the, I don't, I don't, I don't talk. I'm sorry. We are from Egypt, but I, but I don't talk the English word.
Yes. So are you interested in translation? Oh, sorry, Laura, go ahead. Yeah. So we're working on that, and it is not going as quickly as we would like. We just, we are producing information so quickly and getting it out into the world. But there are a couple of important things. We will be putting translations on our website, is there available, and also making them available through schools. For folks interested in these sessions, they will also be on YouTube, which has a translation function. And then, so yes, we definitely know that that is a need, and we very much appreciate your question and your, your coming today. So thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, Tasha, you are next, if you would like to ask a question and unmute yourself? Okay, Tasha, I'm going to unmute you.
Hi. So I just
So I just had a question, kind of like the other one, as far as like the schedule and logging in on time. I am actually a CPS employee. So I just wanted to know, like, will parents and teachers have to actually report during all of this? Or what?
So, Tasha, what we can do is touch base with you offline about this one, if you don't mind. Because we're trying to make sure that we can get all of our parents' questions answered.
Well, I am a parent. I have a child in CPS. So that's what I'm asking. I don't know if I'll be able to have her log in at the time that she's supposed to for her classes if I have to report.
Oh, I see, okay. So again, if you don't mind, if we can take this one offline, we'd be more than happy to work with you. Can you put your, the name of your first and last name and the school that you are working in? And then we can make sure that we can get in contact with you?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Sarah, I have a question for you through the chat. What about free lunches? Will those distributions continue during distance learning?
Yes, they will. The plan is to do meal hubs at every school during our weeks of distance learning. We do have a small change in the meal hub operation due to federal guidelines on school meals. And these meals will only be, we will only be allowed to distribute those to actual CPS students at the meal hubs once we start distance learning. And those will be on Wednesdays, every Wednesday. We will pass out an entire week's worth of meals.
Great, thank you. I'm going to do one more chat question and then do phones. Just a reminder that if we don't get to you, feel free to submit your question. If you would like to send us contact information and want us to personally follow up with you, we're glad to do that. I wouldn't submit that through Q and A. I would go ahead and put that in the chat. So I just wanted to give folks a five-minute warning if you were interested in that. But we have several questions about Montessori. So I just, I want to make sure we bring that up. In terms of distance learning, anything that we are thinking about specifically for that group? And then once we're in blended learning, how do you plan to keep those groups in smaller cohorts?
Yes, great question. I've been in communication with Montessori principals, and they're working with their teachers. So again, like in-person learning, they will use the district adaptive materials, but the delivery will be based on Montessori philosophy and using, there's a lot of hands-on materials. So the teachers do have the flexibility to incorporate the pedagogy and the use of Montessori materials while in in-person, blended, or distance learning.
Okay, great, thanks. And Tiana, actually, while I have you, there was, there were several questions about kids in transition years. So whether that's kindergarten or seventh to eighth grade, anything in particular about those groups?
Yeah, the orientation is going to really be important because not only are you learning new students and friends, but also new school culture and staff members. So we are really looking at opportunities. And I know some have started some kindergarten kind of virtual open houses-like. So we're having discussion on those transition groups to do something virtually for those students and families.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, so Amy McDonald, I see you're in queue with your hand raised. If you would like to unmute yourself, we'd love to hear your question. Amy, you're unmuted. Do you want to try asking your question? Okay, so feel free, for some reason, we can't hear you. So feel free to submit question versus in chat or through Q and A. And then we have, oh, wait, Amy, there you are. Now we see you, too. Okay, great, go ahead. Oh, no, we still can't hear you. Okay, so Amy, I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll go ahead and have you submit through chat if you'd like. And then it looks like we have T on here, if you would like to ask your question?
Hello, yes, I would like to ask a couple of questions. So I've been looking at my voicemails. And I got a voicemail that there's Spectrum, the kids have to use Spectrum for like their, like Google Meets or for their class things.
Great question, T. Spectrum is the cable company. So that's probably about maybe connectivity. But what we really want students to do is really be on Google Meet and Schoology. So do you have? You're welcome. Do you have access to Google Meet?
Yes, I do. Which I believe you're allowed, I believe, I'm actually 10 years, 10 years old. And I've been talking to him. He said that, that my, we're probably computer from our school. And we're going to get, we're going to use Google Meet on that in our recital homework.
You are absolutely
And my other question was that my other friend from other schools, they but our school, it's, but our school, we have like, we have five weeks before our school starts.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the question you broke up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did my, my friends, they, well, our school, we have to wait five weeks before it starts. And my friend's school, they go to school like two times a week, which I don't get why we have to wait five weeks.
Yes, that's a great question. I don't know if Ms. Tremble Oliver wants to speak to that, but a lot has to do with the particular areas and the zip codes and making decisions. So the data looks very different from area to area. So we're specifically looking at zip codes and the health of our city in Cincinnati.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I better get going, my phone might die.
Well, thank you.
T, I think you made everyone's day. So, thank you. So with that, I'm going to turn us back over to our superintendent to close us out.
So thank you, everyone who tuned in this evening. Again, this is the first of many, many more to come in terms of town hall meetings. We want to hear from our families and parents. So thank you so much for being here. I'm going to end it with a quote by Maya Angelou, and it's coming up in just a moment. Well, I'll go ahead and share it. It says, "Stand up straight and realize who you are." And I think that that's what we have to do right now in this pandemic. We are Cincinnati Public Schools. We have been around for 191 years. And although we are not your great-great-grandfather's district, we are a foundational cornerstone in our neighborhoods and in our communities. And we are here to stay. We thank you for staying with us, for staying the course with CPS. We offer a lot of great options, and I know that you are aware of that, and that's why you're here with us. But we just want to say thank you for being here, for standing with us, for supporting our district. We will tower above this circumstance. It won't be easy, but as a community, if we all pull together, as we have, we will tower above and come out even stronger on the other side of COVID. So thank you again. Please, please, please give us your input. We want to hear your thoughts. We want to hear your questions. And we appreciate you being a part of our CPS family. And have a wonderful rest of the evening, everyone. Bye.